Welcome you to tonight's school board candidate forum. This would be a great time to turn off your cell phones. Just check them out. We're very pleased to have five of the nine candidates with us tonight. And they are seated on your left to right. Chance Adams, Bob Klug, Grant Mystic, Cynthia Nord, and Marla Savage. Four of the candidates declined our invitation for various reasons. Donna Strohing for family health issues, Larry Z driving a beat truck, Sue Strohing personal obligations, and Randy Lang who went out of town. We're very pleased to have Black Duck graduate and local businessman Kevin Beck accept our invitation to serve as our moderator. So Kevin, it's all yours.
You guys probably thought we divided them up as by men and women, but it's actually alphabetical, so it's... School board candidates, you will each have one and a half minutes to respond to each question. Laura Wood and Jane Revard-Fenske will serve as the official timers. When they hold up a yellow card, you have 30 seconds left to respond. An orange card indicates you have 10 seconds left, and a red card means you must stop. I will alternate between candidates for the first opportunity to answer questions. Each candidate will be given the opportunity to answer any question that I ask. This evening I have eight prepared questions which will take most of our time. If time allows it, I will take questions from the audience. If you do have a question, please raise your hand, and a three-by-five card will be brought to you to write your question on. Raise your hand again, and it will be brought to me. Because of time constraints this evening, there will be no verbal contributions from the audience. If time runs out, we will drop any remaining questions and skip to the candidates' closing statements. I also have with the closing statements, one of the candidates. Donna Strohing has written her closing statement. So at the end of the closing statements up here, I will read Donna's closing statement. So with that, school board candidates, do you have any questions? Let's begin. We'll begin with Chance. Chance, would you please introduce yourself, including your educational background, community involvement, and your main reason for running for the school board?
Thank you. That seems pretty loud. First, I'd like to thank the Black Duck Education Association for holding the forum, and I'd like to thank Kevin Beck for moderating. While I've grown up in the area my entire life, my father and mother both received their high school diplomas from Black Duck. I received my high school degree from Black Duck in 2002. After high school, I went on to receive my degree in education from BSU in 2005. We have a great community here, and like all communities, we face our share of challenges. There's no quick fix to these challenges. There's no one word answer, no simple way out. And really, that's why I'm running for school board. I think that our community needs people who are willing to work hard and work together for the best interest of our students. I think, at the end of the day, our common values are greater than what separates us. We need board members who are willing to do what it takes to move forward for the best of the community. Board members who realize that compromise is the foundation of responsibility. And I will be that board member. If elected, I will serve the interests of the students and the community. I will be level-headed and solution-focused in considering the issues. I appreciate the opportunity this forum provides for sharing ideas and demonstrating my values. Thank you.
Thanks, Chance. Bob?
Thanks, Kevin. My name's Bob Klug. I too would like to thank the BEA for having this forum so we can express our views to the community. I'm a 46-year resident of this community in the school district. I graduated from Black Duck High School. From there, I stayed in the community. I worked as a custodian here at the school for 10 years. I feel I have a pretty good view of what goes on in this school from day-to-day operations. Currently, I'm the public works supervisor with the city of Black Duck where I am in control of the budget for the public works department and the day-to-day operations of the public works department. If elected, I would like to be a part of a great team. I would get this school and this community together for the betterment of all of our students.
Thanks, Bob. Grant Mystic?
Thank you. My name is Grant Mystic. I graduated from Black Duck High School in 1983. Since then, I've owned and operated a farm in Neebish. This is my eighth year on the board. I too think that the school needs, you know, great leadership. I think we've come a long way in that. You know, I've always heard that the school needs, you know, the community needs the school to survive. Well, I believe that is true. I also think the school needs the businesses and the community together. They all need to work together to survive. And basically, I'm running because I care. I care about the kids, I care about the school, and I care about the community.
Thank you, Grant. Cynthia?
Thanks, Kevin. I'm Cynthia Nord. I've been a member of the Black Duck School Board for the last 12 years. I graduated from Black Duck High School. And unlike Bob, I'm not going to tell you how many years I've been in the community, but I've been here all my life. My children all graduated from Black Duck High School. And I have five grandchildren so far that will be attending school here. I am currently enrolled in Northland Community College at the Fever Falls Farm Management Program. My husband and my son and myself run a farm, a trucking business, and I also have a caring business in town. My reason for running for the board is to continue to give our kids the best education that we can. And more importantly, my own grandchildren will be going to school here. And I'm hoping, praying that we have a school here for them to go to because as far as I'm concerned, it's top-notch. Thanks.
Thank you, Cynthia. Marla?
Thanks, Kevin. I'm Marla Savage. I graduated from Black Duck in 1987. I moved away, we came back. I have two kids that graduated from Black Duck, and I have two that are currently not enrolled in Black Duck. I am running for school board because it's been a rocky road, to say the least. And I just wanted to throw my hat in and be a part of the team, see how much we can do to get things back on track where buckets aren't hanging from the ceiling and things are run the right way and money's put the right way. Keeping our kids here is the biggest way to keep financial stability, I think. And when we lose the kids, we have no school eventually. So that's about it. Thanks.
Very good. Thanks, Marla. We'll begin with, next question with Bob. Bob, do you have any school-aged children or grandchildren attending Black Duck School? If they do not attend Black Duck, where do they attend?
I do not have any children attending Black Duck School, and I do not have any grandchildren old enough to attend school yet. And both of my kids that graduated from Black Duck School are currently working right now, so...
Thanks, Bob. Grant?
Yes, Kevin, I do have a daughter who was a junior in high school here. I had two previous children that graduated, one in '09 and one in '10 from Black Duck Schools.
Thanks. Cynthia?
All four of my children have graduated from Black Duck School. My youngest one is now teaching school herself. And I will have five grandchildren going to school here so far. The first one starts next fall.
Thank you. Marla?
Like I said previously, I have two kids that graduated from Black Duck. I have two that are currently going to Kellier.
Thank you. And Chance?
I don't have any children going to school. I have a 16-month-old son who hopefully will end up going to Black Duck. And I have two nephews and a niece who are enrolled right now at Black Duck.
Thanks, Chance. We'll start this one with Grant. Grant, what is your goal for the district? And why do you think it's important that you achieve your goal?
Well, my goal would be simply to maintain the level of school that we have here now, which I feel is very, very good. Obviously, in our test scores, prove that and show that. You know, our discipline level is down. One problem we have had, as has many other schools, is declining enrollment. It would be my hope to be able to at least maintain, if not to try to increase that enrollment. But I feel we've got a great school with great staff, a great community. And I would just like to see it be able to be maintained, if not increased, in a lot of ways. And again, our test scores are in the top 10, 15% in the state. And, you know, if we can maintain that over a period of time, we're doing our, everyone is doing their job.
Cynthia?
Well, I, along with Grant, we agree that we need to maintain the quality education that we have so far in Black Duck. We expect great things from our kids. We have very high standards. Our students continue to meet those standards and surpass. They have done great things. We, in the 12 years I've been on the board, we've had five National Merit Scholars. So that says volumes for Black Duck. And financially, the last few years, we have done very well in maintaining our fund balances and between our quality education and maintaining financially. Those are my main goals for the school.
Marla?
There's many, many things that are on my mind when it comes to the school and the school board. I think Black Duck has a great school. I think the kids are awesome. I think anything is attainable. But there has to be good structure. And if there's not good structure, then there's no, there's just nothing there. And when everybody's arguing, there's just division, which there has been, it gets nowhere, and it's just a bad example. I think we need to become more positive. I think people need to be more informed of where the money is going. There's a referendum thing that they sent out to you guys for the playground. I have issue with some of that. Not that I don't think the playground needs to be fixed. I just think that the company that maybe did damage to the playground should have paid for it instead of the people of Black Duck. I want to represent Black Duck. I want to represent the kids. And I just want to go in a positive direction.
Thank you. Chance?
You know, I think the test scores and test results of Black Duck have obviously been good, and that goes without saying. But what I really think is the ultimate goal of the school is to produce good citizens. As a social studies teacher, I think that's really the key. And I think if we do that, we're not only going to produce excellent students leaving the school, five National Merit winners, but they're going to stay in the area. And I think that's really a main key here is to try and keep these well-educated students that Black Duck is producing in the area. When we have a large group leaving, it's tough to maintain student numbers. It's tough to maintain a budget when your students are, your student numbers are decreasing. So I think that would be a top goal is to not only make sure that our students do well here, but to retain them and also, you know, make sure they succeed after high school. Because, you know, you can get a high school diploma, but I think you need a little bit more, so, thank you.
Thank you. Bob?
I would have to agree with Chance that the school not only puts out good students, but the school always puts out good citizens as far as I'm concerned. There's a lot of good citizens that have come out of this school. I guess one of my biggest goals is to keep the quality of school that we have already and move it forward the best that we can. And to get the school board working as a team, I think you get a lot more accomplished when you work as a team than when you work individually and divided. So I think that's one of my biggest goals is to get the school board working as a team together for the betterment of all the students.
Thanks, Bob. Microphone to Cynthia. Cynthia, let's agree that we all want our school to succeed in educating the children of this district. What does our successful district look like to you in three to five years?
Well, to start with, I would hope that our enrollment would increase in three to five years. And also, that we have, our legislature's going to have a lot to do with that. Our election coming up. But hopefully, we will have the funds coming in that we can offer the programs that we have now and maybe even add some back that we've had to cut over the last few years. It would be wonderful to be able to do that. I would hope that we would continue to have the success that we have with our students right now, with our test scores. We have a wonderful staff, wonderful kids. If we can just keep going the way we are now, in three to five years, it would be wonderful to just be able to say, "We're the best." Thank you.
Marla?
In three to five years, I would just hope that everything was going strong like it was when I graduated. The school was strong. We didn't have a lot of the issues that are here now. And that was in '87. So I think, I think that it's very attainable. I just think we have to just put our minds to it and go forward. And that's it.
Thank you. All the way down to Chance.
I think in three to five years, we still want to see our test scores where they are. Maybe a little more focus on math to try and increase some of those lower results that we had in, I believe, the 11th grade area. Also, I think in three to five years, I hope that, what I would like to see as a school goal is, you know, some of the, you know, the board working together to make sure that financially sound, whether this levy passes or not, that we're making the decisions that are best for the students and the community and not trying to focus on perhaps our own individual needs like Bob was saying also.
Thanks, Bob.
I think that financial stability is a big, big thing these days. And I would like to see the school work, the school board work together with the administration to get the financial needs of the students taken care of. And at the same time, build up our fund balance. And I think getting our students, or keeping our students' scores where they are or even raising them some is a big, is a big part of what this school is about. So I think we need to keep moving forward there.
Okay. I'm going to interject a couple of presented questions, and I'm actually going to start with one of my own.
Kevin?
Oh, Grant, I'm sorry. Quick, Grant. I'm sorry.
I agree with Bob also about the, the school board needs to work together as a team. And I think that in three to five years, if the school board can work together as a team and everyone is allowed to do their job, plain and simple, in three to five years, our school will be as good or not better than it is today. I don't think we have a lot of problems here. I really don't. We have a few things that need to be worked out, but we need to stay positive. We can't be talking about problems. We can't be talking about, you know, not working together. We need to work together, let everyone do their job, from the administration right on down to the staff. And in three to five years, our school will be stronger than it is today. There's no doubt in my mind.
Thanks, Grant. We'll start with Marla on this one. I think each candidate has, has referenced retaining or growing enrollment. And knowing that we can't control necessarily the population that lives here, I assume that you're referring to open enrollment situations, either in or out. How, how do you see us as a district? How do we retain or recruit students?
I think that even though we all want our kids to be at the top, some kids struggle with learning. And I think to be able to fit every kid's need, whatever it is, to be well-rounded. I think to show that we are a school that produces graduating kids, that doesn't, doesn't turn them out or run them off or, I don't know how else to put it. People, there's a lot of kids jumping around. And I think if we can meet everyone's needs, I think enrollment will increase. Not just the kids that are easy to teach and not just the kids that learn easily, but all kids. Thank you.
Thanks. Chance?
I've taught at a charter school for eight years now. And, you know, I think the one thing that's going to retain students and also bring students here is going to be quality education. I mean, really, I don't think students very often decide where they're going to go. I think it's parents being upset with the situation or parents being frustrated with the level of education that their students are getting. I don't think we have a lot of that here in Black Duck. But I think if we maintain a high-quality education, we're going to lure in other students into the district. And I think if we maintain the high quality of teaching that Black Duck has had, I think that's also going to keep students in the area. And how we do that is really the board's goal with, you know, in terms of the levy and finances, so...
I think, I think one of the board's goals would be to keep the quality teachers that we do have. And when we do replace them, to replace them with quality teachers so we can put out quality students. And I think, I think that that's probably one of the biggest, biggest parts to keeping students around is quality education they get. I don't know if bringing more students in, you know, is always feasible, but keeping the ones that we have that are going to other schools, I think, would be maybe the best place to start, to keep the ones that are already in the district from jumping ship, so to say, and going to Bemidji or Kellier.
Grant?
Well, it's, it's true. We do have quality staff, quality education here. And I think, and that obviously shows. And I think that hopefully, that'll get out there more. And, you know, I know that we've been getting some students from Bemidji and other areas. And, you know, if we get good students, like Bob said, that's, you know, that's what we want to maintain. But I just think that down the road, if the students, you know, keep getting the quality education that they are, eventually, we'll get more students here.
Thanks, Grant. Cynthia?
Well, I believe as far as retaining students, we need to continue to look at ways other than cutting electives and things that students look at to stay in our district. We need to give them reasons to stay here. As far as new students and bringing them in, I think we need to stress not only to kids, but to parents, the kind of an education that their kids can get in Black Duck. Starting with our all-day, everyday kindergarten, they get a great start here. And we try to keep our class sizes small in the lower elementary so that we can concentrate on reading, math, writing, those kinds of things. And I think we need to get it out to other communities, to the parents as well as the kids.
All right, we'll bring it all the way back down to Chance. And this is another question from the audience. Chance, what qualities, behaviors should school board members exhibit?
Well, I think they should be leaders, first of all. And I also think, you know, they should be level-headed. You should be calm. You should, you should be willing to work together for what's best in the community. You know, and you should take input from the community. That's why you're elected. I think those qualities along with, I think, a devotion to education, a devotion, you know, to see this school succeed is what qualities board members should have.
Bob?
As I said before, I think all board members should be team players. They should, they should play as a team of six. Along with the administration, they should let the administration do their job. That's why they hire the administrators to manage the school. I think they need to set good examples for the students, and they also need to be leaders of the school.
Grant?
I think board members should be leaders. I don't think they should have personal agendas. I agree, they should let the administration and the staff do their jobs. You know, work together as a team. That's the key. We're not always going to agree. I understand that. But we need to try to work together as a team.
Cynthia?
As Grant, as all three of the gentlemen said, we do need to work together as a team. That's the most important. It makes life a whole lot easier, even if you don't agree. We hire our administration to manage the school. We need to let them manage it and not be in there telling them what to do every minute. As far as setting an example, we need to, first of all, having been on the board for 12 years, I know there are things we can't say, we can't do. Members of the community don't always understand that. So we need to really spend time educating the community as far as those types of things, data privacy, things like that. Because we can't always tell you everything that's going on. And we have to develop a trust with the community so they'll trust that we do know what we're doing and that we've gone through training and will do the best that we can do.
I think to represent the people that put you in a place where you're to make decisions, I think that's the biggest thing. The people that have kids in the school, to listen to them and to work not only as a team with your other board members, but also with representation of who you are, who you've been elected by. Thank you.
Okay, let's take this next question. This is one of our set questions. We'll begin with Bob. The Minnesota School Board Association recommends that a school board has three purposes. One, make policy. Two, set the budget. And three, hire administrators who actually manage the school. As a member of the school board, what do you see your role being in relation to the community, the staff, and the administration?
My role with the community would be to listen to all the constituents and the concerns that they have with the school and the goings-on at the school, maybe with their child who's a student at the school. It could be their spouse who is a teacher at the school. That would be one that I would really take very seriously. I know that, I've been reading some on the Minnesota School Board website, and they really stress to hire good, quality administrators that are going to manage the school. And the school board is just going to oversee the administration and make sure that they do the job that you hired them to do.
Yes, I agree with all three of those MSBA statements. Make policy, set budget, hire administrators. I think as far as the community, I agree. We need to listen to people when they have concerns. Even if you don't agree, you still need to listen. Or maybe they'll come up with something that, hey, I never thought of that or I never looked at it that way. A lot of times, you get good feedback that you don't think of as a board or whatever. I think respect is a big thing. I think among staff, I think, I think staff deserves respect. And that sometimes goes a lot further than anything else. And I think as a board, we need to really step up and respect our staff.
Well, as I said before, our job is to hire good administrators and let them do their job. We shouldn't be in here telling our teachers what to do. That's what we hire our administrators for. That's why we pay them the big bucks. And as far as the community, we need to keep them informed of what's going on. And oftentimes, the community gets misinformation and... the community gets misinformation, and all of a sudden it spreads like wildfire. We need to help make sure they get the right information, and not the rumors that are going around.
I think just like tonight, where they're having this televised, or what taped, or whatever it is, it should be done at every board meeting, so the people that can't get out, the older people, or, you know, sometimes there's not a lot of seating, some people just don't like to go out at night, or are in, in a small, tight room. It'd be nice to have it televised, so people could watch it, and they could be informed, they could gather from it themselves, take their own take. And then with the community, it's just like, I'm just going to repeat what everybody said, it's the same thing, you've just got to keep everybody involved, and, and staff is huge, and what staff, we have in Blackthick, they give everything. I worked in the school, and with the teachers, and they were wonderful, they give everything they have. I wish there was more money to pay them, I hope that things increase, because you're only as good as what you can give your kids, you know, and if you can give them the best, your kids will end up in a good spot.
Thank you. Chance.
Well, I think, basically like everybody said, I think the job of a school board member is to listen to the community, and I don't know if that necessarily has happened recently, you know, and that's, that's obviously why I think we've had such a large turnout in some of the, you know, quarrels and things that have happened as of late, and that's something I think that would definitely need to change, whether we inform the community more through websites, or online, or however. I think with the staff, we definitely need to retain the high-quality staff that Blackthick has, and support them. I think teachers get a bad rap a lot of times, when in reality, they're spending, you know, eight, nine hours a day with, with, you know, our kids, and we're trying to, you know, and somehow they get a bad rap, I don't understand that. But I think that also goes to supporting the administration. The administration is the key here, they're going to be the ones that are deciding, they're going to know whether or not these teachers are good. As a community member, you know, I may know the teachers that my nephews have, but I'm not in their classroom every day, I'm not watching them, I don't know what they're, you know, perhaps providing, I think that's where the administration comes into play, they need to make that decision of, you know, this teacher is a really good educator, and as board members, I think we need to take their word for it. Thank you.
Thanks, Chance. Grant. The state has delayed paying back schools for money it borrowed in 2010, and may never pay the district back in full. In setting the budget, what would your primary focus be to cover the monetary needs of the district? In other words, what is your financial plan for the district?
Well, first of all, hopefully the state does pay us back, you know, if they don't, because, you know, we've been having to borrow money to operate, you know, not because the school is necessarily broke, but because the school, or the state, excuse me, has delayed funding. And in my opinion, we had no choice but to go ahead and borrow that money, obviously it cost us some interest on that, but we had, absolutely had no choice but to go borrow, as did many other schools, and are in the same shape, so, you know, we're not a school of, without state aid, we don't have much for revenue, and if we don't have the revenues other than the state aid, we have no choice but to go borrow and hope that the state comes through with their promise of payment.
Cynthia.
Well, as most of you know, or those of us that are on the board know, I should say, and a lot of the staff does, the average operating referendum in the state of Minnesota for schools is over $900, and I think all of you out there know that ours is next to nothing. We passed a bond the last election, which is, other than the dollar referendum, was the first one we've passed since I've been on the board, so it's very, very minimal. And in the next year, our bond from 1993 will be going off, so we will have more dollars available in our community, hopefully. As with Grant, I am hoping like heck that they pay us all of our money. If we don't, there are a couple of areas that I still see where we can make some cuts that will not directly affect our kids. Other than that, three years ago, we looked outside the box and came up with the four-day school week, and I think that we're probably, if we come to that again, we're going to have to put on our thinking caps and look outside the box again, and maybe come up with some other ideas where we can save some money, yet keep everything intact for our kids, because I don't see where we can cut anything further when it comes to directly affecting our kids.
I think my biggest financial thing is to keep the kids here. If you don't have kids, you don't have a school. You get so much money per student, if you were, if the kids are leaving, there's a reason, and that has to be addressed, and, like, that's, that's probably just the baseline. I don't know what else you can do, and like you say, hope, hope the state pays.
Chance.
Well, I think we need to be honest, I don't think the state's going to pay us our money.[975.22][975.22](Laughter) You know, so with that in mind, I think we really need to realize that we do get a lot of our, our funding from student enrollment, but, I mean, our community is decreasing, you know, so there are going to be some tough decisions that are going to need to be made. Like I said earlier, there's not one single thing you can say like, this is going to fix our budget, you know, it's not going to happen. But what we do need to do is we need to place our trust in the administrators that we've hired to, to make those decisions, and to try and lead us in the right way where they think we can make cuts, where they think we can save money. And then it's up to the board to, to set the budget, to set that goal. I think the, the one area where we can't cut is in education, in the teachers, and making sure that we continue to, continue to deliver quality education, because if we do that, I think we're going to get and retain high-quality students.
Bob.
I would have to agree with Chance, that you'd have to put your trust in the administration that you have hired to set the, to help you set the budget, and your business manager that you have hired, those are the people that are going to know where you can possibly make cuts if you have to, where you can maybe save a dime here and a dime there. I'm with Grant and Cynthia, I sure hope the state pays us, but I don't know if that's going to happen, but to, to sit down and come up with a financial plan at this table without talking the administrators and the business managers, kind of tough to do, but that would have to be something the board would have to really sit down and figure out, together with the administration that they have hired to do that job.
Let's have the microphone down to Cynthia. Cynthia, you mentioned something in your previous answer that, that ties into one of our audience questions, so I'm going to have you start this one off. You mentioned the four-day school week. Do any of you favor a five-day school week? Yes or no, and why?
Well, I'm in favor of the four-day school week, the reason being, we've done nothing but improved since we've been on the four-day school week. Our test scores have gone up, our absenteeism for staff and students has gone down dramatically, our discipline problems have gone down to almost nothing, and on top of it, we've saved a lot of money.
Marla.
I enjoyed the four-day school week when the kids were here for a time, because it gave you that Monday, and that Monday was a big day, you know. Now my kids, my last two kids are going five days a week, and I got to tell you, I, I lean towards five days, because it's so much easier on them. It's not, it's a long day, and when the winter comes, when your kids are in sports, they don't see the light of day, and they don't see the light at all until spring, and that's tough, you know. Money factors in, yeah, four-day week doesn't kill the kids, but I think the five-day is easier on them.
Thank you. Chance.
I think like Cynthia said, we've maintained our high test results on a four-day week, which is, you know, pretty impressive, and I think, you know, that's a admirable thing to keep in mind. The only other thing I would say, and I don't know all the information behind it, would be perhaps whether the younger students and parents having to hire daycare on that, on that fifth day, if that's something that comes into play, I don't know. And whether or not, you know, the school could afford to go back to a fifth day, you know, that, that's going to be something that would have to be in the budget and talked about, but definitely I'm supportive of the four-day week right now.
Bob.
That's a tough question. When they went to a four-day school week, I wasn't in favor of it, and now that they've been in a four-day school week, and the amount of money they've saved, going to a four-day school week is great, but if, if somehow we could go back to a five-day, if we're financially sound enough, where we could go back to that, I might possibly be in favor of that. One reason, I sub-bus drive, and there's nights where you're dropping kindergarteners off at home at 6:15 at night, and in December and January, you know how dark it is then, and a lot of times those kids are sleeping when you drop them off, you got to wake them up. I think the little kids it's tough on, the older kids, I think it's probably, they probably like it, I would have loved it when I was going to school too. But that's something that I, I don't really have a decision on that, I'd really have to think hard about it. I know some of the businesses in town aren't in favor of it because of the lack of people in town on Mondays, so, you know, that's something that would have to be discussed and, and some thought really put into it.
Thank you. Grant.
Well, initially, I was against the four-day week, I think that the community has adapted to it somewhat. I know that it is still tough on the businesses in the area, you know, so that is a problem. We have saved money, when we sat down and looked at it, the administration and the board, we decided, are we going to have the four-day week, or are we going to cut three or four more teachers? And to me, I didn't feel we could cut three or four more teachers, it would just increase the class size, so in order for the budget to be balanced, again, we had to go to the four-day week, so. I think it's, people have adapted pretty well to it, there's still some things I don't like about it, it is a money saver. Will we always have the four-day week? I don't know, you know, but as of now, it seems to be working okay.
Thank you. Let's, let's go ahead and hand the microphone down to Marla. Another question from the audience, a couple of the, of the incumbents of the sitting board members have discussed that financially, that we're fairly stable right now, so if we can agree that the school is financially stable, why a referendum? Marla, you go ahead and start.
Well, I have no idea. That's one of my questions, I don't, I don't have, if there is so much money, then why are we asking the people? Families are hurting just as much as the school. It is harder and harder and harder if you have kids to feed them. It just is.
So, okay, let's, so for the, for the three that are not currently sitting, maybe you could indicate whether or not you're in favor of, of a referendum right now?
That's about all I have.
Okay. Chance?
No, I'm not in favor.
Okay, thank you.
I think one thing that we've had here is that every time there's a referendum or a levy, it has to be super-specific, and that's, I think, an issue. You know, I think we should be trusting the board to make decisions, to ask for operating funds, to, you know, if we're going to replace the playground, if we're going to replace the multipurpose room. We should be able to trust the, the school board in making those decisions, and the administration, instead of saying, these are the four things that we're going to do. I think that's one of the, the big concerns that I've heard, is that people are concerned that if they do that, that money is going to go, instead of to site improvements, it's going to go to, you know, A, B, or C, and not help out the students. I think if we're financially sound, as long as the building is, you know, operable, and right now, you know, I think there are certain things that, that need to be fixed. You know, I, I would probably say, you know, I, I don't know how to answer that one, probably no, I'm not in favor of the levy.
Bob.
Well, I just looked, and it cost me 50 bucks a year. I guess that's one night I can stay home on a Saturday night. But, you know, we may be financially sound, but I don't know if we're $635,000 financially sound right now. And some of the things on the list here that I see, that they want to have fixed up and repaired, I guess if we're looking at getting more students to come to this school, I know if I was a prospective parent checking out the school to see if I was going to bring my kids here, and I drove by the playground, and the pavement's all tore up, and the fence is falling down, I don't know if I'd pick the school or not. I think aesthetics are a big thing to get kids to come here, and get parents to want their kids to come here. So a lot of the stuff I see on this list, I think I would have to agree, probably need to be fixed up, and, and for what it's going to cost me a year, I guess I would be in favor of the referendum.
Thanks, Bob. Grant.
Oh, I'm definitely in favor of the referendum, yeah, you know, we mentioned financial stability, yeah, we're stable, but we don't have a lot of money. And, you know, we talked earlier about the three-to-five-year plan, if we don't maintain our facilities and our building, in three to five years, we're going to be a lot worse off. We need to be able to do upgrades, we need to be able to fix things up, like Bob said, appearances, you know, that, kind of, it's called the ghetto out there, it looks awful. And as far as this referendum, I definitely am in favor of it, I think it's spelled out fairly clear on what the money will be used for. Again, if we don't do something soon, in three to five years, we're going to need to spend a lot more money, and we do have a referendum that's coming off, I think if people look at it closely, I do believe that in most cases anyway, their taxes will actually go down, when the, when the, when the referendum or the levy comes off from the last one, and this one, if it passes, is put in place, I do believe that for the most part, the taxes will go down.
Cynthia.
As Grant said, we are financially stable right now, but we have many things that we have put off over the years, repairing to maintain that stability, so we can use those funds for education. What we're looking for, the, the second part of the referendum is directly to help students with smart boards, technology equipment, but the first part are things that we, we tend to put off so that we can keep things good for the kids, but right now, things like the playground and other things, it's a safety factor that's involved here too, and if we take the money out of the general fund to fix these things, then we're going to be looking at some more serious problems down the road. And yes, I am in favor of the referendum. And as Grant said, we're, after our 2013 payment on the '93 bond, everybody's taxes should be less, considerably less, even if we pass this referendum.
Thank you. Chance. There are three mandatory school board trainings, plus the Minnesota School Board Association Conference, that train members on how to be a good school board member. As a member of the board, how important is it to keep current about state legal issues and to follow the MSBA's recommendations for school boards? Would you attend these workshops?
Yeah, I, I was on the Tred North School Board about six years ago for a two-year term, and it was the same thing, I would definitely attend these trainings, I think it's relevant to be up to date on all school law, and just the changes, I mean, I mean, a great example is last year when they dropped the No Child Left Behind, and all of a sudden, you know, we switched to the MMR. You know, knowing those changes as a school board member, I think are really crucial, and I think, you know, why wouldn't you go to, to learn more about your school if you were a board member?
Thank you. Bob.
Absolutely, I would attend, I think it's very important to keep up to date on all the current legislature that's going on, maybe talk to some of your legislators. The best part about going to training like that is, not necessarily what you learn in the classroom, but what you learn talking to all the other board members after the classes. classes are over with. So yeah, I would definitely attend all of that.
Yes, definitely, I would, you know, keeping up on current issues. MSBA is a wealth of knowledge, we use that a lot, maybe sometimes too much, but we use it a lot. I would definitely, you know, keep them in their training sessions, their school board convention, all that stuff. You can't stop learning, you know, it's, I don't claim to know it all by any means, and, you know, talking to other people, talking to MSBA is definitely knowledge-based.
Cynthia?
I believe Grant and I had to go to four mandatory trainings, phase one, two, three, and four, that we both attended, but, and yes, I would attend any trainings, workshops, and have in the past the annual conference in the middle of the winter, plus we've got to negotiations, trainings, anything that's available that the administration or MSBA strongly recommends.
Yes, I would go, goes without saying. I mean, you have to go.
Bob? This is another question that came from the audience. Would you agree that the school board is running a multimillion-dollar company? And if so, how much school have you each completed, and what would your qualifications be for running this multimillion-dollar company?
Yeah, I guess I'd have to agree with that. There's a lot of money that flows through here. What qualifications do I have?
Well, what schooling or qualifications would you have?
Qualifications, I guess I'm in charge of helping with the budget and setting the budget for the public works department with the city, so I have a pretty good idea how budgets work. And I've been working with a really good city council the last ten years, so I think I have pretty good qualifications to run this company.
Thank you. Grant?
Yes, I would agree, it's a multimillion-dollar business. Having the background of being a farmer helps me out some, but, you know, it's not just me, it's a team. It's definitely the business manager, the administration, everyone together. And I think, you know, it kind of boils down to a lot of common sense and listening to what those people who are professional tell you and trust in them. And I think that's kind of the bottom line.
And a budget? Cynthia?
I also agree that it needs to be run like a business. It is a business to start with. And along with Grant, I think we have to work together as a team with the administration, the business manager. And I think my background, my husband and I had run our own business for thirty-five years, several businesses actually at one time, and I think that kind of qualifies me to know how to work with budgets and finances and so on.
Marla?
Well, I don't know that I have any super qualifications, but like Grant said, I'm just one piece of the group, and if I was elected, I would just learn and do the best I could.
Thank you. All the way down here to Chance.
Well, first, you know, I have a degree in education from BSU in social studies. I've served on the Tred North School Board in Bemidji. I currently serve on the Minnesota Finlandia Board, which is a ski marathon. Also, I think if we're going to talk about the school as a business, we need to realize that it's a nonprofit. I mean, this isn't, this isn't a multimillion-dollar corporation that we're running, we're talking about our kids. So if we're going to talk about it as a business, I think we really need to focus on it being a nonprofit, and in our budget, how are we going to best serve these students? We're not paying out to stockholders. We're paying out to our students and making sure that these kids in the future are going to want to, you know, stay in the community and want to contribute. Thank you.
Thanks. Grant? Another question from the audience. What type of relationship should a board and its members have with its community, its staff, its administrators, and its parents?
Well, I think, you know, it goes back to what some of us said earlier, you definitely need to listen. You need to listen to everybody. You know, I've run across times where I went to a meeting thinking, on an issue, I've studied it and talked about it with other people and thought, this is how I'm going to vote, or this is how we're going to vote on this issue, and maybe someone will call or stand up at the meeting and explain something, and I'll say, hey, you know, you're right, I never thought of it that way. You know, so we need to listen, we need to have a relationship with the community, we need to have a relationship with, you know, that goes with the parents also. As far as the staff, I think it goes back to maybe what I said earlier, a lot of it, I think is respect. I think as a board, we need to respect our staff, our workers here at the school. You know, monetary issues and things are nice, but sometimes, respect and fairness go a long way, sometimes go further than that. Administration, I have no trouble having a relationship with the administration as far as being a friend with them, being a friend with the teachers, you know, would you rather be enemies? You know, it's a small community. I'm not going to come in here, I'm not going to put blinders on, I'm not going to put a muzzle on, I'm going to talk with these people, I'm going to socialize, but yet, I'm professional enough, I have hope, and they are, that when decisions, important decisions have to be made, we may not agree.
Cynthia?
Well, I think, first of all, you have to have an open mind and be willing to listen to what everybody has to say. As Grant said, I have also done the same thing. I've come into a meeting thinking I had my mind made up until you hear somebody else's side of the story, or learn something new from somebody else. Everybody has a different opinion, and they're not all the same. I think with our staff and our administration, once again, as Grant said, also, we are a small community. We're more like a family than you would be in a big city, so we can't help but be friends, and I think everybody has, it's a better working relationship when you can be friends as well as colleagues, or bosses, or however you would like to talk about it. But I think the biggest thing is, is like Grant said, you need respect, you need to keep your mind open, and not just be stuck on one page.
Marla?
I agree that you need to get along with staff, but you also need to set the bar high and make sure it stays high all the way around. You can be friends, but you also have to maintain what your responsibility is to the people. You have to have an open, almost relationship with anybody that approaches you to listen to what they say. It's frustrating sometimes at school board meetings because you're not allowed to say what you are there to say, they're, you know, they stop you, or they give you three minutes or whatever. I would like to see that people got to say what they needed to say without degrading someone or putting that teacher, whoever they were upset with, in a bad place, but still keeping it open enough. If we are a small community, if we are a family, we should be able to address problems at these meetings as well, and that the public shouldn't be shut down.
Thank you. Chance?
I think in some of these things we've talked about before, I think, you know, the role of the admin is really key. I think the board's relationship with the administration is to give the administration directive, and then let the administration achieve those policies or goals. And then, really, it's to support the staff and let the administration do their job in terms of, you know, supporting, you know, improving the staff. I think parents is a really interesting involvement with the school board, because I think we could look around the room here, and we would see that, you know, no matter what, most of us would probably be in this same room regardless of what it was for in the community. I think as a school board member, I'd want to think about how can we expand to make sure that at parent-teacher conferences, we're achieving, you know, perhaps eighty percent of parents showing up? Because I would really be surprised if there was that high of parents' involvement. I think parent involvement is really key, and I think as a board member, that would be one of the things I would really want to emphasize, is how can we get more parents involved, not just the ones that are continually involved, but how can we expand our reach? And how can we get more and more involved? And I think when you do that, you're going to retain students, and you're going to, you know, really improve the quality of the community.
Bob?
I would have to agree with Chance that you hope your administration is, that you've hired is doing the job that you hired them to do, and you've got to have faith in that and let them do their job. You've got to be a good listener, open to communication, and you've got to remember that you're only one person on that board. There's five other people. You may have what you think is the best idea in the world, and five other people don't agree with it, but you have to give and take. You have to, if they don't agree with your idea, you have to find a way to come to a common ground with the rest of them, and you have to take that and go with it and agree with it, even if maybe deep down you don't agree with it, you have to support the rest of the school board on that. Parents, I think you have to have open communication with them, be a good listener, and listen to their concerns that they have, and then relay them to your administrator, who you have hired to run your school for you.
Okay, thanks. Cynthia? If you were going to prioritize educational programs, which would be your highest priority? Areas that might be included would be early childhood, lower elementary, upper elementary, middle school, high school, vocational training, college prep, et cetera.
Okay, first of all, I think we need to start at the bottom. I think we need to start with kindergarten, with our, keep our small class sizes the way they are, concentrate on reading and math. I think these kids need a good foundation to start with. And then, as we go through the elementary grades, we really need to concentrate as we have, since I've been on the board, our main goal has been to be really strong in math and reading. And from then on, we just need to get our kids ready for the real world and for furthering their education. They need to be prepared for college when they leave here, or for whatever job they decide to go into. And our kids are very well-prepared when they leave here.
Thank you. Marla?
I think the elementary is a good place. You have to have a good start, but then I think ninth grade, when their credits start to count for college, and they're going through their hormonal things, and they're, you know, they're giving you fits, and they're not wanting to do their work, and those, that is a really critical time, because then they start to fall behind, and then it whacks them, like about eleventh grade. And then, then again, you have people that have to go and take credits at the AEC, or try to somehow regain those credits. I'd like to see kids stay where they need to be, maintain their credits, ninth through twelfth grade, instead of falling so far behind. So I agree with the good foundation in the elementary. I think it's wonderful here, but I think, like I said, ninth grade, when it really starts to count, we lose a lot.
Chance?
Well, I think if you're looking at the whole education, the ultimate goal is to produce graduates. And with that in mind, you shouldn't be really focused just on college prep, but post-secondary education. I think if you look at all the recent information out there, if a student doesn't get some type of post-secondary education, whether that's through vocational training, whether that's through college, whether that's through joining the military, or some type of apprentice program, I think you're going to see their standard of living decrease. Also, I think if you emphasize that post-secondary education, what you're going to get is you're going to get a top-down where, if the ultimate goal is to produce high school graduates that are going to move on, every program underneath it is going to support that goal, from early childhood education all the way through up your middle school, your junior high, your high school years. We have a great elementary program, I don't think anyone would deny that, and we have to just extend that into, well, how are we going to move these kids from this great elementary program into preparing them for a post-secondary education?
Thank you. Bob?
I don't know if I could take, all those things you listed on there, I think would be a top priority for this school. I don't think one, don't know if one thing should come in front of the other. I think every, the kindergarten has their own needs, the elementary kids have their own needs, the junior high kids have their own needs, the kids getting ready to go to college have their own needs, and the kids that are not going to be going to college have their own needs. So I don't know if I could really prioritize one over the other, because I think every single one of those that you listed, Kevin, are very important to this school.
Thanks, Bob. Grant?
Yeah, I agree, I think they're all important. However, I'm a strong believer in early childhood education. I firmly believe that if a kid gets off to a good start, whether it be kindergarten or even preschool, there's going to be a lot less problems down the road. They're going to be ahead of the game, kindergarten, first grade, all of that preschool, that's where it starts. Then, you know, we had some concern mentioned up here about ninth grade and whatever. For the most part, I think if these kids are off to a very good start in their early years, they're going to succeed all through school, and graduation and everything will be fine for them.
Thank you. Let's hand the microphone down to Marla. And Marla, you mentioned in your answer, ALC, and we have a question from the audience that says, please discuss the need or the lack of need for an alternative learning center based in our small district, or school district, I'm sorry.
I think, I think it's nice that it's there for the kids, because it's almost, they get so far behind, that's been my experience since I've been here, and especially with the boys get more behind, not all boys, but they start to lose track of their credits, and they, it just, it snowballs. And they get to a place where, yeah, they want to graduate, everybody's waiting for them to graduate, and here, they're, you know, nine, maybe seven credits short. It's tough, so there is a need for that, but my, there isn't a need if we keep the kids on track, ninth through twelve. You know, there isn't a need, that we offer enough here, it's just, it's really keeping your eye on that. But, I don't know, I think it causes kids to feel inferior, and I don't think they should have to feel that way, I just think keeping them on track, getting them through, and getting them graduated, that's the biggest goal.
Thank you. Chance?
Now, are you asking if the Blacktix School District would create an ALC?
Well, I'm reading, Chance. I guess, I guess I don't know, I thought the question was the need for an ALC.
Well, I mean, there's an ALC in Bemidji. I think the real, the real question here is, why are we losing these students? And, you know, in my experience, I don't think most students who go to the, go to ALCs actually, you know, perhaps further their education in the right and correct way. I almost think it would be better to, let's say, have a super senior. You have a student in here for, you know, instead of twelve years, you have them in here for thirteen, and they're going to get mainstream education. The school is going to maintain that student's enrollment, and I think at the same time, they're probably going to perform better. I think the real goal behind, instead of not having an ALC, is to have some type of safety net, to catch these students before they fall to where they're looking for, well, we need now an ALC. Now we need to figure out how we're going to save these kids. And that should have happened, I think, before that, and creating something that we can have to further that, so, you know, whether we decide they won't be able to make it here, or maybe they should be a super senior.
Thank you. Bob?
I would have to agree with Chance. I think a super senior would be a lot better idea than an ALC, alternative learning center. But I don't know if the Blacktix, I don't really know what the question, did they, did they want the Blacktix High School to start an ALC, or?
Bob, I don't know the answer to your question.
Because I don't think we'd really want... Because I don't think we'd really want to go into competition with ourselves, something like that. But I think Chance's, his super senior idea is, you know, if they don't have enough credits to graduate, bring them back next year, and, you know, red shirt, I guess, what would you call them, a red shirt? If the state's willing to pay you to, to, to bring them back for another year, bring them back for another year, let them get their diploma, and hopefully they'll grow up in that year, and they'll maybe want to further their education a little bit more.
Thank you. Grant?
Well, I think an ALC is a definite last resort. Our students get a lot of opportunity here to succeed, whether they be low-end, if they're low-end, I know there's many teachers here, early in the mornings, after school, offering to help, there's Mondays. And I'm sorry, a lot of them goes back to just the home, you know, where they being pushed to do their work. But the teachers here are willing to step up and help these kids that need the extra help. And in most cases, I think that they can succeed if the individual is willing.
I believe in the years that I've been on the board, the number of students that have needed a program like the ALC has dropped dramatically. And Bob, we could keep them here until they're 21, that would help our fund balance. We have also put in place a credit recovery program that helps keep our kids here in our school, and I believe three out of the last five years, we've graduated 100% of our seniors. So, that's really good for our school, something new. And I think that shows what great teachers we do have here, and all of our teachers are willing to go above and beyond to help kids when they need the help.
Okay, we'll bring the microphone down here to Chance. Chance, who should set, this is a, an audience question, who should set the rules governing board procedures, methods, and behavior, and who should enforce them?
Well, I think the, the rules are set by the board, through a directive, you know, by the state of Minnesota. I think the board should perhaps listen to the community if there, if there's changes that, that the community is urging. I think this last spring was a great example of that, where I, I mean, I heard a lot of clamor for perhaps adding a seventh board member and taking away, or adding that seventh board member, which would make an odd-numbered board, which Black Tech is one of three schools out of 16 in the area that have an even-numbered board. You know, so, you know, that was an area where I think the board maybe should step up and say, well, okay, the community's clamoring for this, we can put it on the ballot, let the community decide. But besides the board rules, the board sets those rules, and I think it's up to the board chair to enforce those rules as, as their responsibility, and bring up any, you know, issues that could arise because of it.
Bob?
I would agree that the, the school board should set their own rules, but they should do it with guidance from the Minnesota School Board Association. I believe the state of Minnesota probably has a little bit of say in their legislature on what you can and what you cannot put in for your rules. And like Chance said, listen to the community and see what the community wants. You know, if they want a seventh board member, maybe we should put it on the ballot and see what the community wants. I know that's tough to do if you've got three people voting to put it on and three voting not to put it on. But, you know, maybe someday, if that's what the community wants, you know, maybe that's what will happen.
Grant?
Yeah, I think that we follow MSBA a lot on their governing rules, also the board chair. And I think listen to the superintendent a lot. I think they have a lot of ideas and suggestions, and tell you what's appropriate, what's not. But, you know, if, if we work as a team, I think that, for the most part, we can behave ourselves, but we need to work together as a team, follow our policy, listen to the administration, listen to the board chair, and follow what MSBA recommends.
As Grant said, I think the big thing is we need to follow what MSBA recommends, but we're also governed a lot by state statute. There's a lot of things we can and cannot do, and we have no control over that. I think we need to listen to our administration advice that they give us and recommendations that they make.
I think just what everybody else said, the same. It's, you have to listen. For me, it's, it's more of making it more personal, you listen to the soup to, to guide you, but you, you also bring in the, the public and, and what their views are. And hopefully, it's all, it's what everybody, at the end, everybody's happy.
Okay, let's bring the mic down to Bob. Question from the audience, Bob. Would you accept letting politicians speaking to teachers at workshops, or using our school sign in political ads on TV? I don't know. Would you accept letting politicians speaking to teachers at workshops, or using our school sign in political ads on TV?
Well, I don't know why anyone would want to use our school's sign mascot on a polit- political ad on TV. As far as politicians, are they talking about workshops before school starts?
I would assume they're speaking of politicians coming in and addressing groups of educators, I would assume.
I, I don't know if that's necessary. I think that teachers should, should search out their politicians or legislators, just like the school board should, to let them know what their concerns are for the, the school, the community, and, and the funding that we're, we've been receiving and that we haven't been receiving. But I don't know if politicians need to come in and talk at a, at an open workshop for the teachers, but, yeah, that's just my two cents.
Okay. Grant?
Well, I don't know that, I agree with Bob, I don't know that politicians should come into a workshop and, and, and speak with staff or teachers. However, as far as the school sign, it is what it is. It is a public school, it is public property. I guess if there's a politician or politicians that they want to use the school sign as a campaign or a commercial, I guess I don't have a problem with it. But as far as them speaking at a workshop, no, I don't think that's such a great idea.
Cynthia?
Well, I agree with Grant. We are a public school, it's public property, and it's also good advertising for our school, I would think, to see our school sign on TV. As far as politicians speaking at workshops, I guess I don't have an opinion either way. If staff doesn't want to listen to them, they could leave, or choose not to listen to them. So I guess I don't have an opinion either way on that.
Marla?
I don't think it should be just one politician. If you're going to bring in politicians, bring in all politicians. And if you're going to not pay them, no, you know, there can't be money or anything, of course. And, I don't know, does it say that our school is a supporter of a certain politician?
I do not know the answer to that.
You know, when you, when you think about it, is Black Tech totally behind this politician? I don't know, I just heard rumors, I haven't seen the commercial, I haven't seen any of it, I don't know. I, I'm, I'm not really for it.
Chance?
Well, I think having a politician come in and speak to staff, and I don't see the harm in it. I think our staff are pretty smart, if they decide to leave and walk away, I think they can. As far as a politician using the school logo on political ads, I, if I was a school board member, I'd definitely ask him to take it off. We don't want, you know, whether we agree with them or not, or whether they're, you know, trying to give us all of our money back. You know, I think we just want to maintain a, a distance from that realm.
Grant? Question from the podium. Nobody has really addressed something that's very near and dear to my heart, and that's extracurriculars. And I, I think I'd like you to address where you see, you know, the values of extracurriculars with regards to budget, and, and hiring and retaining coaches and leaders for those extracurriculars.
Well, as far as a budget for the extracurriculars, it, in the overall picture, it is a very, very small amount. One, maybe at the very most, 3%, 2%, somewhere in there, it's a very small amount in the overall picture. I am a basketball coach here at Black Tech, and I cannot tell you how I believe and strongly believe that extracurriculars really strengthens a student's education beyond the classroom. There are so many things involved in extracurriculars that I could sit here for an hour and tell you, and, and speak about them, that, that a student gets that they do not get in the classrooms. So, I think that it's, it's a, it's a valuable, valuable experience. I think that, to be honest, some, there is a, a few kids that are here because of that. Is that necessarily right? Well, maybe not, but would they be better off not here? You know, I think they're better off here. As far as coaches, retaining coaches and longevity is somewhat important to establish a program, I believe. We're not always right, we don't always make the right decisions, it is a very tough job. We coach a team, not an individual or two, so it is a tough job. We don't, don't always make everybody happy, that's for sure. But as an overall budget issue, to me, it's not a problem. We, we don't spend that much on our overall budget, or we need to be cutting any extracurricular activities.
Cynthia?
As Grant said, it's a very small part of our budget. Our budget is almost $7 million, and our extracurriculars only cost us a little over $200,000. So it's very minimal, minimal when you look at the big picture. I also don't think our community realizes the time that our coaches put into stressing education to their kids that are in the athletics, speech, drama, band, choir, all of our extracurriculars. I know we do have some coaches that actually have a study night, one night a week, and they're very concerned about whether kids are keeping up on their credits, and adhere to our board policy as far as making sure kids don't have incompletes and so on and so forth. So, and extracurriculars, as Grant, these are Grant's words from a few years ago, they're just an extension of education.
Marla?
I think that whether it was $200,000, whatever, I, I just think you absolutely have to have extracurricular. I just, there's no ands, ifs, or buts. The kids, there, it's, it's a part of your childhood, if you want or you pursue sports, drama, whatever, it's, it just so, it just makes you the person that you're going to be one day. And I just can't imagine even looking back when I was in school, not having, not having that. It would just, it'd be like just three-quarters of the circle.
Chance?
I don't think anybody would say that we need to cut extracurriculars. But I, I do think they need, there needs to be some type of high standards in place for extracurriculars. You want to try and create citizens through extracurriculars on a high school level. I also think what's happened in the last few years with creating a really strong elementary extracurricular program is a really, I mean, that's where it, it all starts. If you get kids interested in physical education, band, drama, those things when they're young, I think that's going to be a lifelong thing that they maintain, where, you know, here I am still playing basketball, maybe not very well, but, you know, started, it started from when I was, you know, doing those elementary programs, and I think it's come a long way, and I think we need to just keep emphasizing those.
Bob?
Very near and dear to my heart, too, Kevin. I, I would not suggest cutting extracurriculars. I think there's so many things kids learn from being on the basketball court, or being on the football field, or being on the baseball field, and, and if you want to know how it brings the community together, all you got to do is look back at the baseball team last spring, and see what, see what happened there with the community, and all the people that showed up down in the cities to watch them, a team finally make it to the state tournament. I know a few years ago, they were talking about cutting the wrestling program, which was very near and dear to my son's heart. And what it cost to run that program, all he would have had to do is transfer to Bemidji, and the school would have been losing money. So it doesn't, you know, like Grant and Cynthia said, it doesn't cost that much to run these extracurricular programs, and if it just keeps a few kids in school that maybe wouldn't be here if they didn't have those programs, I think it's well worth it.
Are there any more cards, any more questions from the floor? Barb?
I don't have any, does anyone else have any questions?
Okay, we'll start at the beginning, we'll start with Chance. Each candidate will now be given two minutes for a closing statement.
I think that everyone up here is obviously trying to do what's best for the community. I mean, we're all volunteering basically for this position. I don't think anybody's going to get a lot of glory out of being a Black Tech School Board Member. But what I think, as voters, you want to think about is, what do you want out of your school board members? Do we want new voices? Do we want people who are perhaps going to bring that level-headed, that calmness, that working together, that maybe we haven't seen in the past? I think those are questions that need to be asked, and I think I'm going to be that board member. I think I would be willing to work together as part of a team, like Bob's been emphasizing. And I think I'm going to bring a lot of ideas that, because I'm in education, and just that access to education that perhaps some other board members might not. Once again, you know, I've, I've been a teacher for eight years, I'm a school, I was a school board member at Trek North School Board, when we had to make some difficult decisions, and, and now that school is on its right way. I think th- this is a crucial time, and we really have to decide what we're going to do as community members, which way we're going to go. And I think new voices is definitely needed to make that right choice. Thank you.
Thank you, Chance. Bob?
I would have to agree with Chance, and I don't think anybody's up here because they don't want to be. I think we all want the same thing for the Black Tech School, and that's to have a quality, quality establishment for our kids to go to school at. I think a couple of things I maybe bring to the table, common sense is one of them. I'm open-minded, I like to listen to people. As far as budget-wise, working with administrators, I've had the pleasure, the last 10 years, of working with two great city administrators who taught me a lot about budgets, great city council members that taught me a lot about budgets when I didn't get what I wanted. So I, I think my budget experience, working well with, with other people, making this school board a team again, who works well with the superintendent that we have, the principals, who's going to respect the teachers, respect the community members, and the students, I think that's what I bring to the table.
Thank you, Bob. Grant?
I agree with both of them, that we need some stability, we need to work together, that is a big key. Again, I, I mentioned it once or twice before, we need to trust our administration, we need to trust our staff. If somewhere along the line, someone is not doing their job, we're going to know about it. We don't need to be here digging around trying to find out if they are or they're not. We're going to find out about it, you know? It amazes me that two incumbents and one former board member are not here tonight to be heard. That's what you people are here for. For one reason or another, they're not here. I do appreciate the one candidate who at least, I know it's gone for a good reason, who had the gall to write a letter. But you people are here to listen, or agree or disagree with me or anybody else, you people are here to listen. There's some that are not here. Do I enjoy this up here? No, I really don't. But I care about the school, I care about the community, that's why I'm here. I wasn't jumping up and down, you know, excited about being at this, but you people deserve to hear me, whether you agree or disagree, you deserve to hear me, and the rest of it. I appreciate the rest of the candidates who showed up. I just can't believe that some did not, and it, is that the kind of board we want? Are those the people? Are those the people we want? Or do we want people that are here, who care, and who'll work together, hopefully? I believe that, and it'll work for everyone involved, and it starts with the kids.
Thank you, Grant. Cynthia?
As Grant said, it starts with the kids, and that's why we're here. And my main reason for being here is to continue to have the great school that we have. My belief has always been, in the past, that a member of the school board should have a real vested interest in the school. In other words, have kids in the school, know what's going on in the school. But I do have grandkids coming soon, and with the problems that we've had on the board in the last year or two, I believe I need to finish what I've started. And my main goal is to get, in the next two years, since I'm running for a two-year term, get the board working together as a team, as we've done in the past. There is nothing harder than working on a board where the board is split, and nobody is willing to compromise. I think we need to work together for the, what's best for our kids, and continue to give them the great education that we have in the past, and support these new, younger board members coming up who have kids in the school and who are gonna be around for a long time. And the people that really have a vested interest in the community and the school both, thanks.
Thank you, Cynthia. Marla?
Well, there is a reason I don't have my kids in Blacktech School now, and it's not because I don't think it's a good school. Things transpired about a year ago, it was with the old administration. I had many, many things going on. My husband is actually the one that pulled the kids, and they've done fine in Kellier. Until the board gets back on track, until the school gets back on track, there's no reason for me to bring my kids back until I, until I see it. And from what I've seen so far, it's looking pretty good. I've heard good, good things. And that's why I put my hat in, or my, my name in the hat, so to speak, to just, to try to get things back to where they need to be, for everybody's sake, so we don't lose our school, so we don't keep losing kids. These are our kids, this is our community. These are kids that, generational families, and we had entities come in that drove a lot of those away. And there's, that's all I, that can be said. I'm for the union, I'm for collect, I'm for collective bargaining, I'm for all of that. I think it all serves a purpose, but you have to have a good, strong board that listens to the teachers, listens. When I was in school, we'd have board members pop in, sit in class, and it was no big deal, it wasn't intrusive or anything. I think that, I don't know, we'll just let the public decide, but I think everybody, you know, especially the two, the two new ones, I think that new is good, good, fresh ideas.
Thank you. Like I stated at the beginning, four candidates who are unable to attend tonight, one of them asked that I read a statement from her, that's Donna Strohing. "My name is Donna Strohing. I regret that I will be unable to attend the school board candidate forum tonight. My husband and I have to travel to Minneapolis for an appointment regarding his health. He is undergoing treatment, but everything is going to be fine. I've lived all my life in Blacktech, Minnesota. I graduated from Blacktech High School in 1996. My husband Jeremy, Jeremy and I have been married for 14 years. Jeremy owns and operates 4S Express Trucking. For the last seven years, I have enjoyed staying home to raise our kids. We have five children. We have a daughter in the eighth grade, a daughter in the sixth grade, a daughter in the second grade, and two sons. We are also a host family to a foreign exchange student from Russia. She is in the 10th grade. I've been a Girl Scout troop leader for the past seven years and refereed junior high volleyball games as well. I am running for Blacktech School Board because I see a need for some new perspectives. I am proud to have graduated from Blacktech and just as proud to send my own children here. We have a great school with very dedicated and compassionate teachers, administration, and staff. I want to bring the focus back to the positive things happening here. I feel that the role of the school board should be as a member of a team. A school board member should be able to make compromises while respecting the opinions of others, whether that be a teacher or a community member. A school board member should always make decisions based on that which is best for the education and the well-being of the students. I also feel that it is important to let the appropriate teacher or administrative member deal with issues regarding students whenever possible. The best way to work as a team is to let the community know that the school board supports the staff and the decisions they make. I know the budget has been a major concern for many. We are not alone, as many schools are facing the same financial problems. I do not wish to see taxes increase, but I also do not wish to see opportunities taken away from our students. The reality is that there are times when the school board is going to have to make cuts and ask the community to support referendums. However, as a community, we have to keep in mind the big picture. We need to do our best not to take away from educational experience of our students. I hope to be elected to the school board because I have a lot invested in Blacktech School. I believe Blacktech is truly a great place for kids. I want to get back on track and focus on our goals. I have a strong drive to make this happen, as I have witnessed firsthand just how much this school does for our children of our community. Thank you for your time and support." That was Donna Strohing. So, that brings close the 2012 School Board Forum. I'd like to thank you candidates, I'd like to give them a round of applause. Also, I'd like to thank the host organization and the audience for your questions and your time. Thank you.
I think we need to give Kevin a hand for great work. And I wanna thank you, community members, for taking time, coming out tonight, listening to the candidates' views on these important issues that face our communities, one of our community's vital assets, and that's our school. A special thank you to the people at this table, I think we need to give them a hand, who were here, who took your questions. These people are willing to step up and dedicate countless hours, required of school board members. And to all of you, we hope that each of you will seriously consider the answers you've been given here, the things that you have heard tonight, when you vote on November 6th, and we hope that you will get out and vote. If you know of people who were unable to attend tonight's event but would like to see or hear the things that went on, it will be broadcast on Public Onion's Bemidji, Channel 2, for the next two Mondays at 9:00 in the morning, so there's an opportunity for them. A last thank you goes to Tri-Sigma Club members for baking the bars being served tonight. And this ends the 2012 Candidate Forum Event, and we invite all of you to please stay for coffee, bars, and some good discussion. Thank you.